On all counts, thank you very much. Good evening. Welcome to the Camden Select Board meeting for February 15, 2022. Before we start, I mean, a couple of things. One is we are, you do have the ability of logging into our webinar. The link for that is on our agenda, which is in the Camden website under Select Board. If you do log into the meeting, please ensure you identify yourself and residency, which is required by statute, so we know who you are and that you're Camden resident. Also, please, if you have, if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, use the Q and A function only, please, not the chat function. We try to make sure that the accessibility to the meeting is the same for people who are live here as well as on Zoom. And thank you for that. With that, before we start our agenda, I would like to add an agenda item with the board's permission, and that specifically to make an addendum adjustment to have an executive session pursuant to MRS A 4056C Disposition of Public Held Property and Subsection E, Legal Rights and Duties.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all's in favor, four zero. Thank you very much. And with that, we will go back to our originally published agenda, the first item of which is public input on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody here who would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Mr. Grassi?
Thank you. Can I remove my mask?
Yeah, it's optional.
Thank you. Just so you can hear me a little easier.
And please introduce, remember to introduce yourself, please, Tony.
Right, I'm Tony Grassi, 363 Belfast Road in Camden. And we're... So I just wanted to do a couple of things. First, I wanted to, again, as I've said before, so to thank the board for tackling a really complicated question and thinking about the long-term future of Camden, not just the next year or two year and what the latest crisis at hand is. And to thinking about how do we adapt to climate change? I just heard the new report on the radio that across the East Coast, one foot of sea rise by, in 30 years. So that just released today, apparently. But sort of how does, how should Camden be adapting to the ravages of climate change to save the taxpayers, the cost of having to repair public infrastructure later by thinking about what you can do today to prevent problems from flooding? And we're going to have, as we all know, serious flooding events across the country, all sorts of severe weather events, and we're not going to be saved from that. The second thing I'd like to say is, as I particularly wanted to thank Town Manager Audra for sort of having a steady hand in this process and being thoughtful, working with you all on sort of thinking about how the town should be addressing these issue. And it's not easy in these COVID times for anybody, particularly, I think, for, you know, for us retirees, it's not a terrible burden, but for people who are working, I think COVID has been really a serious, serious issue. And so, thank you, Audra. Specifically, I want to let you know that our group, which we've come to call Restore McGonacook, have started gathering petitions. We started this past weekend, signatures on the petition that's the, covers the language that we introduced to the Select Board back November, I guess it was, something like that. And to reiterate that we are really fully supportive of the Select Board's process here of investigating this complicated question and trying to, we're interested in trying to be sure it doesn't get derailed by a special interest group whose only interest is in one portion of the river. And so our, our proposed language, referendum language is specifically designed to be supportive of the work you all are doing and to encourage that to continue, to educate the public and allow for significant public discourse between now and whenever an item needs to come to the voters. I'd like to read into the record our statement that we are using as we talk to signatories for the petition. It's headed Restoring the McGonacook River Supports a Bright Future for Camden. "A group of Camden residents, simply calling ourselves Restore McGonacook, is advocating for a holistic and wide-ranging examination of all the options for a comprehensive river restoration project. We see a vibrant future for a healthy river that provides another natural feature for the town of Camden. Our vision is restoring the McGonacook River to allow free-flowing water from the lake to the sea by removing relic dams and adding naturalized fish passage that will restore historical river connectivity and migration patterns, improve ecosystem health, and enhance flood resiliency. Flowing three and a half miles from McGonacook Lake to Camden Harbor, the river has long been a cultural, ecological, and economic centerpiece of the historic Camden region. The town of Camden owns and maintains four out of the seven dams on the river. The other three dams are owned privately and receive limited attention and use. These relic dams currently obstruct fish passage from the harbor, interrupt the river's natural ecology, and impact flooding patterns. We envision a healthy, free-flowing river that allows fish species to migrate naturally between the sea and the lake, improving the water quality of both. It also means that people could kayak from Norton Pond to Curtis Island and beyond. Other benefits might include guided trips down the river on rented kayaks, spring events featuring fish runs up and down the river, trails along the river, and pocket parks where hikers and kayakers can enjoy a break, historical markers to honor our industrial heritage, consistent water levels in McGonacook Lake and the river upstream from Seabright Dam, modern flood control to protect public and private property, including those in the harbor, from the rising threats of climate change, a natural waterfall of 15 feet at the head of the tide in Camden Harbor, a reduction in dam maintenance costs, and enhanced aesthetic value of the McGonacook watershed and Camden Harbor. We've recently learned that federal funds from the recently passed infrastructure bill could pay for much of the project. We need to protect public and private property worth millions of dollars in Camden's downtown area from increased flood risk due to climate change. Camden residents can create our own future and address problems from relic dams without having to pay higher taxes. Camden residents care about a clean and vibrant environment, and we cherish the natural beauty of our town. We already have conservation trusts for land. We agree to avoid chemical treatments on our properties to protect the seawater, so let's say yes to restoring the McGonacook River. Join us at www.mgonacookriver.org or write us at mcgonacookriver@gmail.com." So, thank you for hearing me out, and we'll see you on March 15. The signatures are all, must be collected and submitted to the town clerk by March 15.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on a non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands will move forward with our agenda, which is to discuss, well, the approval of the board minutes from February 1, 2022, which unfortunately did not make it into the packet, so I would move to have a motion to table this agenda item, please.
I'll make a motion. We move the approval of board minutes, February 1, 2022, to our next Select Board meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. All's in favor, four zero. Thank you. Onto our action items, which there is five. The first one is the approval of 2021 commercial fishermen's float permit applications per Harbor Ordinance Article 5, Section 2. They are for Barney Appleton, Mark Bradstreet, Kent Bradstreet, David Emery, Adam Scott, Bradford Scott, Herbert Rehral, and Toby Winkelhofer, and lastly, Gary Talbot.
So one, two, three, four, five.
Any discussion from the board?
Motion?
Yes?
I'll make a motion. We approve the 2021 commercial fishermen float permit applications. Should that be 2022?
It should be 2022, yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
All of the 2022 commercial fishermen's float permit applications, Harbor Ordinance Article 5, Section 2, for Barney Appleton, Mark Bradstreet, Kent Bradstreet, David Emery, Adam Scott, Bradford Scott, Herb Rehral, Toby Winkelhofer, and Gary Talbot.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion. Yeah.
So I'm, I guess I am just wondering, Steve's not here, so this is going to be hard, but were these all of the applications that we received, or just?
Yes.
The ones that have been recommended?
I believe these are all the applications we received for this coming year.
There's nine of them. Is it the same as last year?
There is, I believe there's one difference between...
Is what?
There's one difference between last season and this season.
And is that because?
One more.
What's that?
One more than last year.
Um, I believe it's one fewer this year than last year.
I think you're right. It was 10 last year.
We have nine this year.
Yep.
How has everybody been? I guess I just, I just don't know if there's any background here. The other, you know, I'm just trying to avoid a situation where somebody might feel that they weren't alerted. I know it would be their responsibility to submit applications again, and, but the other thing that I think we were going to talk about is the parking for the fishermen.
Is that the intent of this item?
It's not on this.
Renewing the licenses, and so...
I thought this was a float permit application.
The first one is for the commercial fishermen's float.
Right.
But part of that is that they, they get a parking space.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
I thought they were getting a thing they hang in the car. They don't get a parking space. They get a parking...
They actually have designated spaces because of loading and unloading, so unloading...
From one person, there's a few spaces, and then they come and go for fishermen.
It says, "Commercial Fisherman Parking."
It's not all the time, I mean, it's...
I guess the, the number of spaces sort of allocated for that purpose doesn't match up with the number of permits that we have.
There are more, there are more boats than there are spaces.
There's, no, there's more spaces than there are permits.
Seriously?
From what I understand.
Being down there, I don't think so.
More than nine spaces for fishermen?
I would have to go and count, but that's...
If there were 10 last year, there would have to be 10 spaces, no?
No, because the spaces is, is from walking down there and looking at them, there are some spaces for fishermen so they can load and unload, but it's not one for each fisherman. It's, it's whoever happens to be there. They might have to take turns using the spaces. Yeah, there's fewer.
Well, it's only the...
I think it's six, and she's usually right about things, but like, six.
Why don't you go check that?
Yeah, I'm confused.
I mean, I just, in the interest of, this isn't my favorite thing to talk about because it stirs up emotions and it stirs up territorialness, and it sometimes makes, you know, people that I like angry with me, and, but, in the interest of fairness and in the interest of consistency in saying that we're going to be examining, you know, this town resource that is the parking, I do see it as a little bit different.
I was, I was going to say, there's some logistical differences with fishermen versus some of the other businesses that you made decisions on.
Absolutely. I mean, I spent a good part of my, you know, hours and hours and hours right there. I even compete for those same parking spots from time to time. And there's no question about the fact that they do need some access there. It does make the, the parking spaces are available for evening events and on Sundays. So it's not that they're taking up 100% of the time, but we had discussed with the day sailors that there may be an opportunity here, since we took the free parking away from them, that there may be some increased need for loading and unloading, and that maybe there could be more shared loading and unloading space rather than, I just wonder if there's any opportunity here to reserve a right to revisit the striping plan or the number of spots based on sort of how the season evolves and what might, we, I don't think we've totally decided how the loading and unloading might...
Yeah, that's...
We should just leave it at that.
I was going to say, I think that's all a good idea, but it's not a part of this term. I think we should approve this and then, you know, figure, find out how many spaces are there, and then figure out, you know, I'd like to see, maybe, you know, if we want to check with people and see what their times are, you know, do they go in the morning? Do they go in the afternoon? Maybe...
Got a message from Steve. There are nine spaces on the landing for fishermen.
Okay. Maybe that can be adjusted, but we need to do some more research before we decide it tonight, because we don't have the information that we need to, I'd like to talk to the fishermen. How much are they used? What time are they used?
Well, can we, can we just separate the application for the fishermen, for the, for the floats versus the parking and the approval? This approval would be for their float application. We can deal with parking as a separate agenda item in the future. Does that make sense?
Well, I guess, I guess what you would be, as, as part of that, what you'd be committing to is allocating them a parking space. I guess how we do that, to Allison's point about, you know, restriping, making it more flexible, loading, unloading, we can, we can still work on that as we go.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's a...
So I see the application here. Are the licenses in here, the wording of the actual license?
I don't see anything about parking. I didn't notice parking.
I mean, I see that this is a permit application, but...
Yeah.
Is there a license?
For?
Along with that?
A license for what?
Well, just like, I mean, it's the same as the day sailors.
So you, what happens with this is they fill out the application. Once it's approved, everybody signs it, and then that, in effect, becomes their permit.
So where does it say that they have parking rights?
That's covered separately, because that's not on this.
It's not on this.
I know, that's why I said this is an application for a float permit.
It's just for the float.
I don't understand how the parking gets involved here at all, but that's, I'm not an expert.
Because it's the same as, it's just like the day sailors. They just want the, you know, the float and the, it's, it's reserving a spot to operate a business in the harbor for a specific purpose, and in many cases, that comes with...
If it's not on there...
The day sailors and windjammers have a separate agreement, license agreement. I'm not aware of a commercial fisherman's license agreement. Is there one?
Well, where does it say that they are allocated parking then? Or where does it say the cost, and where does it say what they're committing to? There's supposed to be something that says, and I know there is, that they agree to, which is, is it in the ordinance?
I don't know.
I mean, where does it say that they're required to have insurance and all, there's all, this is a very basic form. Generally, we have forms for per, when people apply for a permit for something, but then the basis for that, the information on that permit or that form is from an ordinance or from, I believe a lot of this is in the harbor ordinance, but...
Well, I think, I think what we do is we move forward and okay this, and then do some examination of the harbor ordinance to find out where that is.
But we've found ourselves in a lot of trouble by, the last time we just voted to do something without fully understanding it. It didn't, you know, it's been kind of unpleasant for everybody, and I'm just realizing that I am not being, if I were to vote for this tonight, I just don't...
So, so what you're saying is that we're only seeing the application, but we don't know what the application covers, and if it covers the parking or not.
So is there, is there any time limit? Is there a time necessity to get this done this time?
This is already late. We need to do this tonight.
Okay, that's what we need to know.
I mean...
We can approve the float application pending, pending evaluation of the, any other information regarding the, their rights for parking.
Okay.
It's, I'll make the motion to mention that.
A second.
Okay. One other thing I was going to mention, it's, it's good to see that there are a few people, new people, I think, four years and seven years, but the people that have been fishing from our harbor for 25 and 30 years, 30-plus years, which is...
Let's get to the motion first. You made a motion, I have your second.
I second the motion.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I did second.
I'm deaf, you know, I'm getting old.
I second!
Any discussion?
I, I would just add that there's, these agreements are not without conflict sometimes during the summer. I've been a witness to many of them in terms of what, a little bit of disagreement about what they're entitled to. It's a shared, so the fishermen float, for anybody who doesn't know, is a shared, it's a shared float along that's sort of runs down that same ramp where the dinghy dock is, and they take turns...
Right.
Using it.
Right.
Once in a while, it's also allocated for like, somebody that's coming in for an hour or so.
Right.
I've seen that turn into a really big blow up, because there's this thought that it's only supposed to be for the fishermen, but we have a really busy harbor, and Steve does sometimes let somebody else come in there. I just, there is, I think in the future, it would be good to have, when we do these, it would be good to have Steve here.
Absolutely.
So that we're not speculating. I have like this, I don't have any problem with moving forward as long as there's nothing that's going to...
So I...
With a caveat on the parking.
So I guess to, to sort of provide some, I think that there are, there, there's this permit application that turns into their permit to operate, you know, from the public landing as fishermen. There's nothing in the harbor ordinance that talks about parking or anything else they get, but I do know that with some of the amenities we have down there for fishermen, some of the funding streams that, you know, we access have requirements for what we're...
Oh, right.
You know, what we need to do in terms of providing amenities to them, like parking and access, just general access as a working waterfront. So I, I don't think that, you know, all we can sort of point to is how we've customarily run the public landing and some other, you know, strings attached to funding that we've accepted over the years that requires us to provide, you know, loading and unloading and parking for fishermen. But I think beyond the permit application and beyond the limited amount of information that's in the ordinance that doesn't directly address or allocate parking to fishermen, that's really all we have, to speak to that part of the question that Allison had.
We made the motion contingent on any parking discussion, which you're saying is the parking is really not written anywhere.
It's not, yeah, you're never going to find anything like we have with the day sailor or the windjammer.
When we do address parking, we should address documenting something...
Yes.
Regarding the parking for the commercial fishermen for the future. So that'll be a future item.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, four zero. Thank you very much for that stuff. Then we are on to item B, which is conditional approval, conditional approval of a one-year day sail license agreement for the Sally. Just a quick background, in October, the board had, had not approved the continuation of the, then existing was a three-year total agreement for the Sally, and since that time, we've been wrestling with, and that, by the way, that was when we did review and with council and others, and that was done appropriately, and however, there were some circumstances arisen, so Sophie, maybe you could address what this recommendation is to the board.
Well, it's a, thank you, Bob. It's, it's a recommendation to provide the Sally with a one-year conditional vessel license agreement so that Ray may be able to operate the Sally for a year, and then next year we'll do the review, as this should be done, of all the day sailors and their operations. And I think the reason why we're doing that is, as you said, Bob, there's a, there's a few information that came after the, the board voted, but I also think, I mean, my impetus for supporting this is also that we're still in COVID years, and I think we have to be a little bit more supple in the way we assess things and, and... more supple in the way we assess things and, and these are not normal circumstances. So everything we can do to help our business, especially our harbor, I think is, is a good idea. So that's why I support that we give the Sally a conditional license for a year. And my understanding is that the licenses are reviewed every year, every, anyway. So we, we're kind of putting, you know, through, through a different track into the mix. Is that satisfactory?
Okay. Now, are there any other questions, any comments before we continue here?
I, I support this.
Okay. Allison, any comments?
Um, thanks for, for coming up with this solution. I feel, I do feel that Ray might be owed a small apology and I appreciate that you've been really polite and patient and understanding and, um, so.
Well, I think it's a, um, an alternate because it's never good policy, in my opinion, for a board to, assuming any decision has been made correctly, that you should revisit that unless there's real new information. The new information was somewhat foggy, but this is basically a clean slate to approve a one-year standalone, uh, agreement for the Sally. And as Sophie pointed out, that that coincides with every year, we should be looking at our, per the, the application, I'm sorry, the agreements, a, a review of each of the day sails and wind jammers as part of the process. That's, that's, that's always been that way, Mark.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the one-year day sailor license agreement for the Sally.
I second.
Motion made in second discussion. All's in favor. Ray, you didn't, you didn't even have to talk. Ray Williamson, Camden, resident and business owner. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you for working with us on this.
Good sailing, Ray. Anyway, onward to, um, the next item, which is the, listed as the confirmation of Camden Public Library Board of Trustees, which I believe there were two. I also noted that the information on those individuals was not submitted until yesterday and I didn't, I didn't see it until today.
Yeah, it is in the packet now.
No, it's not. It is now, but it wasn't submitted until yesterday. And from my opinion, that's not sufficient time for us to do an appropriate review and thought process. And I would, I would suggest this be tabled until we have a chance to look at that.
I would second that, not because of anything, but I, I don't, I don't know these people personally. They seem like great choices, but I do think it's important that we kind of, you know, understand a little bit more sort of what the process is, what the library is looking for. Um, we, I frequently found myself in a position where residents, you know, typically feel that the select board is in charge of the library and direct their comments as such. And then, you know, I'm explaining, no, it's actually the library board of trustees that, that, um, does this or, you know, things with the park or whatever. And so, um, since we do have the power of appointing, I think it's, you know, sort of important that we have a shared understanding of what skills are being, you know, looked for, what, you know, all of that. So just a little bit more of a robust conversation would be.
Well, Sophie.
A quick question. So who's gonna provide us with this information that we need?
Well, there is more in the packet now.
There's another letter.
Oh, I have the whole packet.
That's my issue. I've oftentimes admonished Audra for putting last minute things in the packet because honestly, we don't stand, stand in hot standby for any ads, especially the day before a meeting. And, you know, that's a little bit me being a little bit stubborn. I apologize. Not because of these individuals aren't qualified. It's not because poor Nikki and company are busily in the one-armed paper hangers. I get it. But it's just more of a, a policy from my perspective. Now, the information is in there. If we have any questions, I would encourage the board members to, so feel free to contact Nikki or whomever and ask any questions. But, uh, again, it's, it, it, the reason for this is we, we shouldn't be perceived as doing rubber stamping.
Exactly.
And I'm making exaggeration, obviously. Um, and I apologize to the library trustees, but we will get to it. That's why I recommended, and Allison seconded the motion to table it.
And my second question, I'm sorry, Bob, is.
Oh, sure.
What is the timing of us approving this? In, in, so when does the library need this approval? Is there a time?
I don't think we should delay it beyond the next meeting.
Okay, good.
That's not, I mean, there's no reason to, in my opinion, unless there's disagreement here. But I would attend to, if we have any questions in reading these documents, research it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All's in favor? Oh, Mark, sorry.
I just wanted to say the information is here. I'm very happy with what they do. I think they did a good job of, of, uh, examining and, and nominating their trustees. And, you know, sometimes I think that, you know, we should, we, we're not rubber stamping, we're just, you know, trusting them to do the job, that they're, that they're better qualified for us than, than we are. I can't see us reading one of these applications after they've done the, uh, the thorough research and saying, oh, no, I don't like that person. So I, I think we should agree tonight. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, that's where I sit on this.
Right.
It's, yeah, and it's not that any of these people wouldn't be good. It's recognizing the, you know, totality of what the library is responsible for and the cost sharing agreement and how we plan as a town and as a select board for things like park improvements. And it's not just the library and the books. It's like a massive landscape. And so making sure that, you know, we should just talk to the library more often in general.
I agree.
I agree. I agree. We need a.
More connectivity.
Yep. Okay.
But that, uh, all those in favor of the motion, opposed. Motion passes three to one. Thank you. Um, on to item D, which is the approval of charter amendments and to schedule possible, no, to schedule public hearings, possible because if we wanted to be in the June ballot, we have to have a public hearing for June town meeting warrant, secret ballot approval of the annual budget. Again, just a brief history here. Um, last, um, last few years, we've put the town budget on the, um, paper, uh, secret ballot, um, that you all voted on because of issues related to COVID, et cetera. Uh, but in last, I think it was November, we put a referendum, an informational referendum on asking residents if they preferred to do it that way versus the, uh, open town meetings we classically held in the Opera House. So with that, um, when my research was done and, and here we are. Sophie, you want to lead the discussion on where we are in terms of that?
Thank you, Bob. Um, yes. So first, I want to thank Deb Dodge, who has been super helpful in, in working on this process and doing the background research that has allowed us to create this proposed change and the memo. Also Bill Kelly, with whom we had a couple of meetings to finalize the, the proposed changes. The memo that is in your packet is in the form of a table.
Mm-hmm.
Where every single change that we've made to the charter is highlighted in the same color that it appears in the text that you also have of the charter. The blue changes are additions. Most of the time, those additions are just legal requirements or clarification. And for the sake of time, I propose not to go over those unless, uh, someone has a specific question, Allison or, or Mark or Bob. Uh, the red changes are deletions, uh, either because they were redundant or they were no longer appropriate to keep in the charter because of the proposed proposal that the budget be voted on by secret ballot and no longer in the town meeting. What I would like to do tonight, with your permission, Bob, and the rest of the select board, is focus on a couple of, on three options we have on how we're going to be presenting the budget. Because I think this is the item that will provoke the more discussion among us and that, that on which we really need to come to an agreement. Because it is really what the town is going to be voting on. Um, the other changes I think are, are pretty, I would say immaterial, but I'm looking at Bill, if you want to correct me on my assumption. I think there really are just.
I want to be, everybody understand too, that what we're doing here is trying to put together a, um, a final draft, as it were, of something that may be contemplated for a ballot.
Yes.
But there'll be, uh, whatever that is, will be opened and discussed during a public hearing for the warrant potential to go on the ballot in June. So there's another, I want, just want people to understand there's another step for public input.
Sure. Absolutely. This is just, this is a presentation to the select board.
Yep.
And, uh, the request to make a decision on one of the options. But yes, there will be public hearings.
So go ahead.
Um, I'm gonna stop here unless you, you guys have questions.
I, I just gotta say, I've read through all of this. I think the information is, is wonderful, uh, very well done. And, uh, I understand the options and, uh, I, I think that what you've written is, is terrific.
Well, it's Deb, I'm Deb. It's really, I'm, I'm, I'm the messenger here.
The one thing I, I will add is I know that the charter committee was working constantly during COVID and, you know, finding ways to get together to meet. And they did an amazing job over a long period of time, much longer than they thought they were committing themselves to. So thank you for that, uh, to Deb and everyone else on the committee.
So you want to focus on the options?
Yes. So if you go to the second page of the memo and on the options of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
The first thing is the budget, in all three options, the six categories that we have retained are the same. So the, the budget categories would not be affected by the format on, uh, uh, used to vote on the budget. The six categories are general government, public safety, highway, streets and bridges, health and welfare, leisure and services, cemeteries, debt capital and contingency and.
That's seven.
That's seven.
Mm-hmm.
I did not major in math.
[laughing]
It is seven. So in all three options, the seven categories will, will be proposed. The first option will have, uh, is the same than the one we had in the previous. I'm looking at Deb, just to make sure I'm not saying something stupid. Is the same than the one we voted on last year.
Mm-hmm.
So we have the budget committee budget, the select board budget, and the vote is on the greater number.
That's what the proposal is.
That's what the proposal is.
Option one is proposal.
Do you want to come and?
Yeah, Deb, come on up. Are you talking about option two?
Yeah, I think I.
Option two doesn't give you the option.
No.
No.
No, it's, it's select board recommendation, as was on the ballot, is what she stated.
What we've done in the, in the last, last.
Deborah, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's, uh, Deb Dodge. I live in Camden.
Thanks, Deb.
Long time. Um, what we did the last two years is just vote on the to, on the total.
Right.
Okay. All three options are talking about voting on it by category by category as opposed to just a grant, just a grant total.
I see.
And she's right. We list and, and required actually by main statute as well as our charter that both the select board recommendation and the budget recommendation are presented on, on the warrant. So option one is that should the budget committee's recommendation for each one of those, any of those categories differ from the select board, the voter, well, you present the higher of the two amounts or the greater of the two amounts.
The greater.
To the voter to vote on. So if you propose $100,000 for contingency and the budget committee says 120, the 120,000 number is the number that the, um, citizen would be voting on.
The yes, the yes vote is for the greater of the two number.
Is, the yes vote is, or yes, no, is for the greater. I mean, you have the choice. You can vote no.
Right.
Right.
But it is.
Not voting for the smaller number if you vote no.
You're voting for the greater number.
Okay.
If you vote no, you're not voting for the smaller amount. You're, you're voting no on the greater amount.
Right. You're voting no on the amount.
Next option.
Pardon?
Next option.
The next option.
The next option is the amount that is recommended by the select board, regardless if there is any difference.
Right. Like, as was, exactly like we did, is that correct? Like we did last June?
Except for with categories.
With categories.
But in this case, with categories.
Okay. So a person can vote for or not.
Correct. If one disagrees with the amount that's proposed for general government, regardless.
Vote no.
The option is to vote no, as opposed to voting yes.
All right.
So instead of voting, instead of voting on the aggregate.
I understand.
You vote for each.
Aggregates. Yeah, I understand.
Um, the, and option three is actually give, if, if there is a category in which there is a difference between what the budget committee recommends and the select board recommends.
Mm-hmm.
The voter is instructed to pick one of the two.
I see.
There are pros and cons to all three of these options.
What?
I said there are pros and cons to each of these options. Um, one of the reasons that we're proposing voting on the categories is to come closer to the open town meeting form of voting on the budget.
Understood.
In the case of the open town meeting.
Understood.
Okay. Somebody on the floor can make a motion.
Yep.
For this amount or that amount.
Right.
And that's what's discussed and voted on.
Right.
So that's why we've chosen, uh, to vote by the categories as well as, um.
The seven categories.
Yep.
Seven categories, yeah.
So it's up to you all to discuss.
Yep.
Which one you think is the way to propose it going forward.
Okay, in this, in this process, um, uh, after, and I did read it, but it, is, is there any, um, how many meetings are there for the public to have input to the budget process? Not the budget committee, not us.
One.
A public hearing, one public hearing?
One, well, the, the proposal is two meetings, one of which shall be an official noto, you know, notarized.
Board meeting.
As a public hearing, a formal, formal public hearing.
Got it.
And a second, just informational meeting after the decision has been made by the select board, which amounts are going to be put on the warrant for the budget. And that is basically publicizing, letting people know, coming in and ask questions. But the warrant would have already been decided after your public meeting because the point is for you all to have the budget committee numbers presented, the select board recommendation presented, and then have people in the public come in and ask questions or make points about it before you decide to finalize what goes on the warrant. Then after the warrant has been decided and voted on, you have an informational meeting later as publicizing what the budget is and to inform the electorate.
The informational meeting, the second meeting, which would be closer to the election, would just be a meeting where the public could ask for clarif, clarifying questions because everything is set by then. So there's no more.
That's what I understood. It just felt to me like it's kind of, kind of late when we've already approved something to go to ballot and we're talking about the budget and, and, and I know I might have having 10 meetings afterwards, but I would think the public participation is going to be extremely limited.
Well, it might be the same 50 people that come to open town meeting that want to come and ask questions, you know?
That's true.
This is another opportunity to educate the electorate what is in the budget.
Okay.
Um, there may be.
Yeah, I'd love to do it.
An item that is, um, more interesting to people than, than the rest of the budget, which is another reason why we've broken it down into the categories. Because if there is something that you know there's heightened interest on, if it's in a specific category, the whole budget isn't dependent on what the points of view is on that certain item.
Sure.
But the informational meeting, I mean, hopefully, even though the budget meetings are March or starting in late February in this case, not a lot of people come to those budget committee meetings that are budget committee members, but they have the opportunity to come.
True.
They're open to the public and we're reinforcing that in this proposed draft. But the point is just to be able to educate the electorate as much as possible before they come to vote on, on election day by secret ballot.
It's a good idea.
It's just transparency.
So the process is really basically budget committee, select board, public hearing, warrant, uh, I'll call it informational meeting. Okay.
Exactly.
Let's just keep it simple.
In a nutshell, that's exactly what it is.
All right, Mark.
Um, a couple of things. Number one, for anybody watching or anybody that watches this in the future, please go to the packet that you can find on the website and read this because I think we confuse it sometimes, but it's really clear the way it's written out. I think it's, it's, it's perfect.
They did a great job. That table just makes it so much easier than just reading paragraph after paragraph.
It's exceptional. It's, it's as clear as it can be. So please read it if you have questions about it. Um, don't listen to us. My, my question here is, um, are we putting all three options on the ballot or are we choosing one?
We're choosing.
Okay, then.
And so. Up to you guys to decide.
We have to decide. And we're putting one option on the ballot. Um, and these are the three options we're proposing.
Right. Okay, then, I was gonna say, if that's the case, um, as much as I understand and like what we do after we review, after the budget committee reviews and, and the select board goes and, and has, often has new information, and I usually like what we decide because, you know, I think we put a lot of work into it. Uh, I think option three is the fairest in terms of continuing town meeting because it gives people a chance to look at the differences between the select board and the budget committee and hopefully they will get information instead of just reacting to, um, what's more or less. But I think that's closest to town meeting, um, and gives people a chance to really, hopefully research why are they different and gives us a chance to articulate why we think we should be more or less. So that's my vote.
Allison?
So, are we, would we be putting these budget categories into the Charter then? Is that what?
So, and it would, it's as, as it is outlined, section.
Already in the Charter, those categories?
No. These are the categories we've been voting on for.
It's actually rare when that's done, because.
132 years.
Something like that, yeah.
6.06, the actual section.
I guess that, that's a concern that I have, because pretty much every year when we review the budget, I try to say, can we change the category names? And they say, well, that's a larger conversation, and we, but I find that people are frequently confused by certain things, like leisure services is a kind of antiquated term. It includes the library, it includes parks and rec. So, I wonder, I like the idea of the categories, because I think it, I'm going to go either way, but for, for people that want to be able to have a pathway to say, you know, I want to encourage the public to vote down this aspect of the budget, because X, Y, or Z. It, you know, allows people to do, you know, they could vote down the cemetery budget without provoking the whole thing. But I think that people are already so confused that I don't like the idea of putting the categories in the Charter, because I think we may want to change those. A lot of the time, you know, debt, capital, contingency, it's, you know, it matters to people whether it's debt for a fire truck or it's debt for this or that. And so, I don't know what the perfect solution is, but I hesitate to put things in the Charter that may further
Change.
restrict us. I mean, public safety is one thing, highway, streets and bridges, so that includes storm drains and things like that. So, I don't, I just don't know that they are.
I think the more administrative issue, Deb, to me, is to Allison's point, is if we list, actually list those categories versus referring to the town's standard budget structure, as it may exist at that time. If you make a change to the town, you have to go change the Charter. That's way too complicated. I'm not saying that it's going to be changes. We haven't probably changed it in, what, 40 years? But if you did change it, you have to go change the Charter.
Well, unless Bill can come up with some wonderful permissive language that could say, or such categories that have been determined by the Select Board as the appropriate.
Charter of accounts.
Accounts.
Charter of accounts.
I mean, let me.
It's Charter of accounts.
The ability for us to listen to feedback on how the public wants the budget to be presented, I think is important, so providing flexibility, so that when I'm not on the Select Board anymore, I'd like to be able to come and say, you know, the way you're presenting the budget is really not as good as the way they're, you know, the categories are this or that, and not have it be well aside from the Charter, you know?
Well, yeah, you can, Bill can write up some of that, whatever permissive language I just said.
That's very doable. That's very doable.
And you can, and you can add that, which will give you the flexibility to either change or, or add. So, I don't, the other thing that exists in here, which is prior to this, and it's in the section, in Article One, Article One of the Charter, Section 1.02, Town Meetings and Warrants, where on, in 1F, there is sort of a open thing here that says, "Any other business deemed appropriate by the Select Board for the welfare of the municipality and administration of the town's finances." So, that is sort of enabling you to do that, to add anything to the warrant that's in the town's welfare and for the administration of the finances. So, that's sort of enabling you to be able to do that, and if we have some corresponding permissive language in 6.06, then you're good to go.
All right. As long, just bottom line, as long as we don't get stuck with a Charter change if we should change the Charter of accounts, that's all, how you do it. The powers that be can understand that.
If you, I mean, I suppose you could get even more vague by saying the ballot shall have a separate article for each of the budget expense categories, period.
Whatever the language.
I mean, I do think that there might be a case where the Select Board might say, you know, there's been a lot of controversy about the budget this year, and we might want to pull out one thing even and say, you know, we're going to let people vote, vote on the police cruiser separately. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating for that, but I'm saying there might be a situation where we would want to do things like that, and.
The reason why we chose those categories is because they're kind of the higher level that, that allows, allows us to give the public a good understanding of the overall budget without being excessively detailed for a ballot, in the warrant.
In the warrant.
I agree with that.
The budget will be published the same way it's been published. So, in, in all detail, but in the warrant, we, we were looking for a way to make it, you know, clear enough and detailed enough without being 40 pages, because we, there are towns where they do have a 40-page ballot.
If you add that language, you know, that Bill's going to write eloquently for you, I think.
I mean, I think overall, it's good to have it, like you, like you said, but I think that a lot of.
No, we need flexibility.
You know, the, the concern about getting rid of town meeting is taking away the ability to have sort of that, a lot of the times it comes down to, you know, should we hire another town planner? Or should we, and I don't necessarily think it's good to always put those little things out, but it may solve a, a problem for the public in the future if we can pull out.
Categories.
Yeah, like maybe sometime we might want to separate the police department and the fire department. I'm not saying I want to do that right now, but it just.
Well, we can always do it. As long as you, the key is, we want the flexibility. I think I'm hearing that consistently across the board, that we don't have to change a Charter to do what Allison's saying or any of us are saying.
It's a very, very.
To the options, though.
You could add options.
No, I understand that. I understand. We can go on forever with this, but, but from my perspective, well, first and foremost, I think a, a budget is about a philosophy. It's not about a number. A budget is not about who's greater or who's less. It's about, there has to be, in my opinion, from doing thousands of budgets in my life, a final decision maker, and that is the voter, of course. But to open up these options to people, to me, is, is the absolute wrong, absolute wrong way to go. I think we have a town whose, you know, my taxes are 70% school, and there is no debate except through the process of going to their finance committee or going to the school board to make a comment about 70% of my tax bill. And to, well, and to, to try to separate Committee versus Select Board, to me is, for 30% of the budget, is wrong. It, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't provide any surety, because I believe the majority voters voted for the Select Board members to represent them, as they have the school board members, elected officials also. I don't see why the processes should be different. That's just my opinion.
I agree. I think it's too confusing also, because when you get.
It's very confusing.
Since there's an order of things too. So, the Budget Committee goes and does their thing, and they decide however much they want the Select Board to participate in that conversation. But the idea is that we listen, and, and then based on that and other things, we have a discussion, and people, including Budget Committee members, have the ability to come and appeal for this or that. And then we ultimately have to say, you know, after all of that additional information after the Budget Committee discussions, we've decided that something different should be presented to voters, and they should kind of see, it takes, they, you know, they should see sort of what the final recommendation was after that, and they can vote, they can vote it down, sort of a referendum on the Select Board.
There is no question.
Decision-making process.
There's no question about that in my mind, because I think to be honest, it is unfair, one second, Deb, unfair to expect the average voter to understand the difference of $50,000 or $100,000 between the line that is public safety and what it entails, except for to protest, I don't want to pay any more taxes. And I get that. And many times I voted in different jurisdictions, not here, against the budget, because I was voting against more taxes. And we.
Commit to summarizing those differences.
Well, and for those people who are interested, that's why I asked about the process. The process is, first of all, we do have a Budget Committee that operates independently before we even touch, well, excuse me, Audra and Company put together a budget, a town manager's draft with input from the, from the department heads. Then that goes to a Budget Committee who operates independently. We monitor, but we don't, we are not involved in that Budget Committee. We listen. And then it comes to the budget, it comes to us, and we have opportunities for public input through a public hearing, at least one. I don't care if it's two, but it's to listen to any individuals who are interested at that point in time in commenting what's going to, going to ballot. But at the end of the day, you have elected officials whose responsibility, just like the school board is, to bring the best thought process for the collective budget to the table for the voters, as we have done the last few years, is, to me, is the only, only option I would consider.
Well, one of the things to reinforce that, if you think that that's the way to go, is the public hearing and the language in the proposed draft, is that both the Select Board's number and the Budget Committee's number are presented at the public hearing. And so, that forms the basis of any public discussion, if there's any difference. And we don't have, I mean, yes, there are years where there are some differences, but I would say majority of the years that I have been here, with very few exceptions, the differences have been minimal, when there have been differences. Part of the, as, as Mark said, part of the advantage of number three is keeping it closer to what people have been used to up until the last two and now, and now three, in three years. But what this does, doing this kind of a process, whether you're voting on the greater amount or the Select Board amount, is it really does become incumbent, certainly in the first few years, for there to be a huge effort to educate the public, because the process will be different.
Yes.
And a real concerted effort, if there are differences, to explain whatever the differences are, so people can, people have a good understanding. Because I think the goal of this is to make it a fair process, to make it a process where more people participate, because they do, more people participate by secret ballot than the open town meeting. We know that. We want them to be as educated as possible. And to have as much understanding as they possibly can.
How does the average person that goes to the ballot box and sees the difference between two numbers know what's in the difference between those new numbers? They won't participate. They won't. There's 50 or 60 people came, or 70, came to town meeting. That is, out of 3,000 and some voters, that's not a huge amount of, of input. So, I hear that, but I, what I see is the average voter going to, what is the voter relying on? A number or their elected officials? If they're not relying on the elected officials, then I'm, that's.
Well, remember, the Budget Committee is elected as well.
Or nominated.
But they actually voted on, on, on the ballot.
I understand.
No, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, and I just change your point.
I'm, I'm just saying.
So, that's why I said it's incumbent for there be good information and education of the public when you make this change, whichever option you pick.
Absolutely, 150%, right? I would love more people to come to Budget Committee meetings or whatver means to talk about, and let us explain the rationale, the strategy, the tactics behind why you're supporting or not supporting a certain number. We don't get that. And we, what we get is, and I believe strongly, that you put a number on a piece of paper to, in a secret ballot as a comparison of two numbers, people do not and will not know the difference. So, the 3,000 or, well, June, probably 1,500 voters that come to the table, they will not know the difference, and they will generally vote for the lower number, because it lowers their taxes, period.
The only difference we're introducing here is that the vote is by category. Last year, the, the Budget Committee budget and the Select Board budget were both on the ballot.
Understood.
And people can see the difference.
But they voted on, they were voting up on the Select Board.
They voted on the Select Board.
But we can have them vote on the Select Board as well, but by category.
That's what I'm suggesting, that's what option two is, correct?
Right.
That's what I'm suggesting. I think it's the only option that is consistent with, not the least of which, excuse me, to reinforce again, the school board. 70% of our taxes is done that way.
They have a, actually, we should be careful about deliberating that, because they hold a, a public, there's a budget meeting where we vote on, and then the, the, what we vote on at the polls is just a refer, it's a up or down on the whole thing, but before that, there's a, there's literally, the school board holds its own town meeting, which is the part we're eliminating.
Well, and that's where I would, that's where I would, that's where I would see the public hearing we're going to be having with the public as being our little town reading with the public. What's the difference?
The difference is that when we go to the Strom Auditorium, and I, I'm not, I, I know that people don't really do this. They only do it once in a while when they have some kind of a thing to talk about. But you do, it's not just the school board holding a public hearing. It's the school board, there are all these articles, and then we, those motions can be defeated by the public. And then based on that, you know, little school board town meeting, it's, that's what's brought forward as the referendum.
I understand.
We are not, just say we want it to be the same.
No, 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 I know.
No, we're not.
In the end of the day, in the end of the day, the decision that goes on the ballot is, is pretty much what the school board recommends.
It's what the school board recommends, or it's what the voters.
We have, we have, we have.
Agreed to what that town meeting.
We have a Budget Committee meeting that does exactly that, when anybody can participate in and vote up or down on a vote. They can recommend, same with the public hearing after we decide on the budget. Those, those are for, public forums, which people who are interested can come and say, why did the Select Board increase the budget number from the Budget Committee? Why did they eliminate the recommendation to Budget Committee?
I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm advocating for the same thing. I'm just saying that, that the process is different.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
Because they are going to be continuing to hold their own town meeting. Very few people even know this exists, that they do this.
How many people attend that?
You and I were there one time, remember?
Oh, yeah.
And they started, you know, as, as more, it was because of the school thing.
Yeah, I remember.
And so, I mean, I think that also the important thing about the Budget Committee and the Select Board is this order of operations part is important, because in a lot of places, the, like in Lincolnville, we were talking the other day, their Budget Committee reviews after the Select Board. And so, it's the, it's kind of, you know, the Budget Committee saying yes or no, really reviewing, this is what the Select Board thought was, was good, and then the Budget Committee saying yes or no to that. The way we do it, it's almost that we use the Budget Committee as input to our process. And so, what I've found sometimes is that the Budget Committee comes out, and this even happened to me when I was on the Budget Committee, after I heard more of what the Select Board was considering, in the end, I actually supported the Select Board recommendation. Sometimes more information comes to light.
I think it's.
Second, I want to.
So, it would be hard to ask people to choose between those things?
I was, I was sort of going to make the point that Allison was making in that we've got a certain process we follow to get to budget approval every year. So, I think thinking about these options and do they necessitate some change in that to what Allison was giving an example for how it's done in other towns, where instead of Budget Committee and then Select Board, do you switch that? Do you, you know, are we, are we switching? Do we need to rearrange our yearly process for how we prepare and get a budget to an ultimate place where it goes before voters?
All, all the.
The, the whole discussion around the public education and what's expected of that, that, I mean, to tell you the truth, it is very difficult for me to start preparing a budget in December or January that's voted on in June.
Yeah.
I, there is so much more information that comes to light as, you know, there's.
Right.
There are certain really important pieces of information that I don't even get until, you know, very late in the process. So, I guess it's thinking, like, we've already got a really sort of extended timeframe for how we do this, or, you know, just being mindful, do we need to extend it more because of whatever option that we pick? Or, yeah, I, I think these are just all sort of like, looking at how, what, you know, actually gets put on a ballot and ultimately decided on by voters, how is that going to have to change our process of how we prepare, review?
I agree. I agree. Because that's.
Aren't you driven by this art, I shouldn't say artificial, but the deadline that's imposed by the state and ballot preparation?
Yes.
That's what drives, you almost start with when the ballots have to be ready,[1782.54] That's what drives, you almost start with when the ballots have to be ready and you move backwards.
Yes.
So a lot of that pressure is driven by whatever that magic date is to get things to the printer for ballots for, or mail-in and absentee ballots.
Yes.
That is out of your control and our control.
Completely, which is very frustrating.
The point I was trying to make on our school is, I realize the difference in the process, there's not, there's not a bunch of items you vote, the smaller of two, you, there's a number in the budget, in the ballot that you vote yes or no on, period. That's all, 70% of our taxes dictated by, not by what their finance committee may say, not by some of the discussions they held in the public hearings. We have public input here. Budgeting is, is, I'm sorry, is not about numbers, it's about strategy and tactics. It's not an exact number, it needs flexibility within it, because of Audra's point, and unfortunately, Deb, as you know, we have to print earlier in these days, so we've moved even closer. And, and then lastly, I don't believe the voters would have voted for it being on the ballot, I'm sorry, was it, what did we call it, a referendum for information?
Straw, straw poll on the November?
Straw poll was unanimously covered to put it on the secret ballot, I can assure you that everybody I spoke to assumes it's going to be exactly the same as it was the last two years. They don't, they're not expecting to make a decision about something they don't know about. They have to rely on the leadership.
I would say that, you know, to your point about, I've seen many examples, well, in the time that I've been here, the numbers between the budget committee and the select board might be different, but that doesn't really mean anything, because sometimes you move funding from one, you know, the, the budget committee might have approved funding for one item
Right.
and you've moved it to a different category for very good reasons, like saying, okay, well, this is not an operational expense that should go in public works budget, it should be something that we finance, and then it goes in debt capital and contingency. So I think that, you know, that's, that's one thing I would caution with the, the choice between two numbers, is that it's a false choice sometimes.
Totally.
And you're making it look like, you know, you're giving people a choice that you aren't actually giving, and there's no context behind why something was moved, or why, you know, or the fact that, yes, the select board did go with the budget committee's recommendation, they just shuffled things around for a different reason.
Right.
You know, that, so anyway, I just want to make those points.
That's an excellent point.
Because I've seen more of that occurring with the select board's review of the budget than you cutting something the budget committee put in or adding something back in. I think it's far more common for, from my experience, you to shuffle things around based on how do we sort of make this work than cutting or adding in.
Yeah, yeah, but again, to the budgeting process is about, you used the term, making it work, making the budget work for the town, and also at the same time to, to maintain reasonable escalation, or not, of, of, of our portion of a tax bill. We've stated in the past, it would be 2% or 3% or inflation, and that's, we've tried to maintain that. So when we go to utilize reserves, or extra reserves beyond what the budget committee had recommended, reduces that impact. And, you know, to me, those decisions need to be made at the highest level of operations. In this, in that case, to me, that's select board. So my
We disagree.
No, I don't think, so I don't think, I actually, I actually don't think we're disagreeing. I think, first of all, the, the budget is an estimate. A budget by definition is an estimate.
Yes.
It is not a carved and sewn set.
Nope.
And as Bob said, these are the orientation, the financial orientation the town is taking for the next year.
Yes.
And they will be refined, and they are refined on a regular basis, because we have more information as the fiscal year that ends in June is completed, and it's, it's unforeseeable when we start designing the budget process in January. We just, we just can't. We just, we just don't know.
All I'm saying is, you know, to options, keep it simple, option two is the only one I would consider.
Yeah.
Okay. So
Shall we take a vote?
Yeah, if you want to. If, if we, actually, we're just drafting this for a warrant language, correct? With choosing an option?
For you to, for you to have a public hearing on, as you would any item that you're going to put on the warrant. So you do need to make a decision
Okay.
what language or which, which option, because there is going to be some fine tuning
Yes.
by Bill
That's, that's my understanding.
On that You, you need to pick the option that you, that you want.
Yes, we have to pick an option.
Yeah, yeah, we have to pick an option, that's why, yes.
Pick it.
Oh, let's pick two.
Make a motion.
But with more flexible language about categories.
Yeah, absolutely.
We agree, yes, we agree on that.
Go ahead. Do we need to make an app motion on this? It's just a draft for a warrant.
No, I don't know the process.
Well, this is, this is a draft for a warrant, we don't need to make a motion, huh?
It's not yet.
Okay, no, all right, so option two?
I'm in favor of option two.
With qualifications that doesn't limit us to the, the already discussion we had about the
Right, he's going to add some language that gives you flexibility.
Categories, categories.
Allison, which option?
I mean, I, yeah, I think the larger question for me is just about the categories and whether people actually want that. I mean, I get lots of complaints about how long it takes to go through the, just voting, you know, just, wow, this was a lot. And so in addition to, so there's the budget, but then, is there stuff in here about all the other semi-budget related warrant articles? Is that all going on the
No, this is, this is going about changing the charter for voting on the ballot.
You know, but I think what Allison's asking is, you know, in addition to where you just vote on the expense section in the budget, you also have an article on the revenue section, you also have, like we have in the past, I don't know if we need to, warrant articles on like the use of TIF proceeds.
I get, I get all that, but
What about, and then interest rates and stuff like that?
Am I confused? All we're talking, all we're talking about here is a development in warrant language that changes the charter.
Yes, that's all you're talking about here.
It's not divergent to other warrant, I don't, we would get to eventually.
Well, no, but I, I guess it's the basis.
You see, there's too many.
No.
Trying to answer Allison's question and say, yeah, all of that stuff needs to still be on the warrant. And it, this is, this is just settling that one question of how you present
So to be a lot
The expense
Belligerent expenses, yes.
But also
It's not even asking voters how to fund.
Well
Is that going to be part of what we
But that's, that is part of the article, of Article 1. 111F, "Any other business deemed appropriate by the select board for the welfare of the municipality and the administration of the town finances." So whatever language we need to put on the warrant referring to the budget and the financing of the town is covered by this.
Yeah, right.
So then it's only crafting the warrant.
But I, but I heard Allison, Allison was talking about, simplifying, about having the breakdown or not having the breakdown in option two, is that what you're referring to?
It's, I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand what the total result is going to be for voters, and I'm trying to remember at town meeting what specifically counts as the budget versus other articles. Is the revenue not a part of? And is that process?
We vote on every category at the town meeting.
Revenue's part of the budget.
But it's not on here.
You know, I, I
I'm not trying to be really difficult, but then, so what is the
It's, it's complicated, I, I, we, we spent a lot of time trying to figure this out because it is complicated. You want to, because we need to strike a balance between giving information to the voters and not overwhelming them with too much information and discouraging them to vote. So it, it is a difficult
Are there 10 other warrant articles that are going to be, that are related to
TIF.
TIF and revenue and
What do we have this year?
There could be.
There could be, I mean, that's what you all decide, that's what you all put on the warrant when necessary.
But as part of the every year process, I just can't remember, at town meeting, do we normally vote on the revenue section?
Yes.
We vote on everything.
And how much is going to be, how much may be taken from surplus to defray property taxes.
Yep.
Right, and some of that can be included
I don't know whether it needs to be
Separate war, some of it has to be a separate warrant article and some of it
It would be a separate warrant article. Well, the TIF maybe we doesn't
Well, what we typically do is we just have one bottom line revenue article, and that includes all of our separate streams of revenue
Right, right.
that go towards offsetting the bottom line expense number, so that the, the net is what's raised by taxes. So that, you know, all of the fees and that we collect, all of the surplus that you're using, any drawdown from reserves.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, that we are, take advantage of this opportunity to, if there are other things that we need to consolidate or something, because ultimately, I think it'd be better not to have 25 different questions that we're sending out to voters.
Yeah, and I, I would say that I think there are a few that, out of an abundance of caution and that we have put on
Yeah.
in the past that we don't need to, like, do we need to have everyone vote on the use of TIF proceeds if what we're proposing is already in the budget?
Right.
And it's already in the development program for the TIF? Like, I mean, that's a bill
Right.
question and something we don't have to answer tonight, but
But also
I'm just saying, there's other things that we could probably look through and be more efficient about what we put on the yearly warrant that we don't need to.
But none of that requires a charter.
To change the charter, because of Article 111F allows us to put whatever needs to be, needs to go on the warrant.
Yeah.
So we don't have to, we don't have to have in the charter, anything about TIF or anything about appropriation.
Is the interest rate stuff in the charter? I'm, I know I should note this, but
I think that's state statute that we have to have a statement of
Yeah.
our financial position to take on more debt.
One of the things that's always confused people who talk to me about is the revenue being separate from the expense part of the budget. You know, if you don't explain somewhere in one article, hopefully, the difference between, the difference between revenue projected and the expenses is this much, and this is what is the root of your taxes, from 30% of your taxes, that needs clarification, that continues, and that, that allows us to do that. But I think
People just see, oh, the number went up
Yeah, yeah.
for expenses and they're, you know
They don't see the revenue went up, they, if it's a separate article, they, people, they want, keep it simple. And we can still do that, as I read this, we can still do that.
Absolutely.
This is just allowing us to put this budget and categories if we want, as, as option two we're discussing, on the ballot for the voters to say yes or no by line item. I'm not a big fan, I'm not a big fan of the line items, but that's
You don't want 11 pages. That's what yours does.
No, well, yeah, I, no.
We, we, there is a town that, that gives you a warrant with 11 pages.
As long as, as long as people know that the total of those seven categories is X million dollars, and the revenue is X million dollars, and the difference is X minus Y.
Well, if you are choosing number two, which is the select board recommendation, then you will have a total of what
Yep.
that amount is.
Yep.
And that would be in the language of that article.
Yep, yep, yep.
Shall the town, blah, 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 this amount, blah, blah, blah.
This amount, yeah. Yeah.
All I'm saying is that article or something should keep it simple for people, to Allison's point, about revenue minus expenses. And that, that can be also included in the warrant, same warrant.
Sure. And the warrant can have
A note.
It doesn't, that isn't necessarily on the ballot, but the warrant can have that, that note as an explanation.
Exactly, exactly.
Explaining where it comes from.
Well, I just, sometimes I wonder if Bill, as you, you've been watching the town Camden operate for many years, and sometimes I wonder if the select board conversation drives things too much, and then we miss out on, like, are there things that either you or Audra think we might want to be considering, or that we
No, I, I would just say this, that to sort of summarize, you're not giving up your authority as a select board to be the gatekeepers of whatever warrant articles you wish to put on the warrant.
Right.
This is essentially taking one warrant article, which is the one we usually see with the categories, and removing it from the floor vote and putting it on a ballot, and now you're just deciding how that's going to look. So it's really just one, the one warrant article that is being replaced here on the ballot, it's not everything else.
It's not reducing the load, per Allison's point, and I, that's another job, that's a separate, a separate attack, a separate project, really.
And I guess also, I was asking, are there other things that we've been doing because of the charter, or that are in the charter, or that we should be, you know, that are budget related?
That I don't know.
But it seems like, it seems like a lot of what we have been doing wasn't necessarily prescribed as
It's not in the charter.
as concretely as, sort of the
The expense budget, no.
the power of, of habit and history, and it didn't say in the charter all that specifically, exactly how all of this was supposed to be voted on. I mean, it did, it was most, more of it than I had realized was past practice, and
Let's say a couple of things. First off, I'm not sympathetic to voters if they complain that the ballot is too difficult, because I think that's the job of being a citizen. But am I surprised that they're disappointed? No. And am I disappointed that they're, that they're complaining? Yes. But that's just the nature of the voting public.
Yeah.
And I wanted to make that clear. I talked about the options, I think, I talked about option three, I like it because it, it gives more control to the public if they were engaged and if they were doing the research, which, you know, is, is the hope of every person that the, the public is engaged and researched and, and prepared to devote well. So that's why I suggested that. However, I've always thought option two, I always thought the select board budget was the best, because we get their input, we get other information, we have the background and the institutional memory to sort of understand
Mm-hmm.
certain things, and I think it's real important. So I always recommend the select board budget, but I wanted to make those positions clear. So I will support two, although I'm disappointed that we're not
We're not edging
we're not able to depend on the public
All right, well
And maybe, maybe we shouldn't be that, that way.
But I think, I mean, I, I think democracy is an exercise that, that we have to engage in every day, right? And so, right now, we're, we're going to give them a new option, something they didn't have last time they voted on. And so, as we keep on educating our, you know, constituency and talking to the public, and hopefully engaging them, maybe, you know, in a few years, we can have option three, we don't know.
We change the process. I guess, the, the bottom line to Bill's point, I hear unanimous option two with the, with the qualification about the items not being listed. However, we don't have to change the charter if we change our charter of accounts. We, we are at this discussion, so I'm hearing that pretty clearly. It doesn't solve all the issues. I agree with Allison, I think this, there's a lot of stuff on there, we could probably figure out a way to do a little better, but that's another discussion. So with that, Deborah, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Deb, thank you so very much. It's been a pleasure working on this complex issue with you, thank you.
You're poised for a comment.
Well, just, there's some deadlines, just to give you a sense of how the statute
Well, just, there's some deadlines, just to give you a sense of how the statute sets up the notice and the hearing and some stuff. So I just want to go through that. Because one of the things you're going to do is authorize that notice of a hearing be prepared, right? So you're going to have to deal, and what the statute says is, just some housekeeping, but the notice has to contain the text of the proposed amendment and a brief explanation. And not unusually, the notice has to be posted seven days before the hearing in a newspaper of general circulation. So that's step one. And then it says that within seven days after the public hearing, the Select Board is to file a report with the clerk containing the final draft of the proposed amendment.
Yep.
And then there has to be a written opinion by an attorney that the amendment is not unlawful or unconstitutional. That's easy enough. But additionally, within seven days after the public hearing, the Select Board, if it's going to order that the amendment be placed on the ballot, it has to do that within seven days after the public hearing. So timing wise, the date you set the public hearing, I would suggest you do it within seven days prior to a Select Board meeting so you don't have to have a special one.
Right.
Because you've got to, you've been talking about this being a, a vote on the final warrant article. It actually is going to happen after the hearing, and that, that's when that will happen. But just try to schedule your public hearing within seven days of whichever.
Well, we don't have an updated calendar here, but Audra, we have a short fuse going to public hearings for supporting ballot preparation, correct? And so.
Yes.
It sounds like what we need to schedule is public hearing relatively quickly. That means the warrant, information has to be prepared relatively quickly also, right?
The warrant is going to come out of the public hearing.
Okay.
So you may have changes.
Okay.
And that's why the statute says here that, you know, within seven days after the public hearing, whatever your final language is, it has to be voted on by you all to say, this is going to be the warrant article.
Okay, well, to go into that public hearing, we're going to go into, with this information and Option Two and blah, blah, blah. And that, that, we don't have a long time to wait to do that.
Right. And we just have to get that together, which you've directed us as how the notice will read.
We probably have to have that public hearing, like, around the first of March. So, right?
No, you want to have the public hearing, it doesn't matter when you have it, as long as, keep this in your mind, within seven days, you've got to have another vote.
Right.
After the public hearing.
Well, and then, but we're backed up to the point where, I forget the date already, that we have to have.
April 12th.
We can't vote at the public hearing?
Why don't we change that calendar?
What was it?
We're looking at.
I was, I had the same.
That was not, I'm not going to pretend I followed every single part of that.
There's nothing behind that.
We can't vote at the public hearing?
No.
There's no.
Well.
Sometimes we vote at the public hearing. Mostly we vote at the public hearing.
At the end of the, I don't think you, it says, it doesn't say you can't, it just says, within seven days after the public hearing. Well, maybe you do have to wait till after the public hearing. It says, within seven days after the public hearing, you may order the proposed amendment be placed on the ballot.
Okay.
And the good news is that the, the town meeting has to be held at least 30 days after the order, which we're going to comply with, of course, easily, because that's not until June.
Yep, yep. All right. All right, Allison.
Sorry, the, the little bit that you cited about needing a written opinion by an attorney that nothing is unconstitutional or.
Unlawful.
Unlawful. Where is that rule? Is that in?
I'm reading it from the statute.
From the statute.
Yes, there's a statute. Everything I've just described is a statutory process for doing a charter amendment.
Oh, only a charter amendment?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. I thought that was any amend, anything.
No, this is just.
All right. Thank you, William. Thank you, everybody. Want to redraft and go forward with Option Two and the qualifications?
What if the town wants to try to, like, challenge state law through our charter or that really?
True.
I guess we just don't do it and we, that's how we would.
Let's take a five-minute break, Bruce, for a potty break.
One last item? We have last item?
Say what?
Do we have one last?
Thank you, Bill, for that clarification. Now, on to our last action item, which is the approval of 1991 tax lien discharge for Worcester Farm LLC. Bill, you want to take the lead on that?
Let's just clean up from a 1990 tax lien that was never properly discharged. It's property over on McGunta Cook. And it's literally just cleanup, but because so much time has passed, it's not appropriate to merely issue a discharge of lien, which normally happens. They have to be issued before the lien matures. This matured 29 years ago or 30 years ago. Arguably, clearly, something happened, it got paid, and the discharge never got filed. There's no record of any problem. And for the last 30-odd years, the taxes have been paid. So it, it, the only conclusion to draw is that something got dropped in terms of a discharge being filed.
Sure, sure.
So nothing but title cleanup for somebody who was probably, was doing some title work and recognized that this has to be technically clarified.
Sure.
And that's it.
Because you can't sell the property with a lien. Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve the discharge of the 1991 tax lien for Worcester Farm LLC.
I second.
Motion made, and seconded a discussion. All those in favor?
I just don't have a strong enough understanding of what's.
Opposed.
Um.
Close it.
Or.
Uh.
Not going to change the result.
I know that.
Or abstain or.
Yeah, whatever.
Is there any, so is there any? Oh, we didn't have, we closed discussion, so.
I did. Nobody said anything.
Did you guys talk about this while I was gone? All right. That was a good one. I even took my, my mic isn't on.
Allison, I'll revert to pre-vote. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Now, it seems to me that the town has a history of giving up rights and right-of-ways and property and usually, is there any chance that there's anything in here that, you know, do we have a stake to some kind of right-of-way through a property that was, I mean, there have been so many times when the town has given up rights in the interest of helping a sale go through quickly or cleaning things up. And it's not always obvious when there should have been. I think of Bay Road as a good example of that.
This is a lien release, which is a financial instrument.
Okay.
Only.
It's got nothing to do with the road and it's at the end of the peninsula, so there's no public rights through it.
Sounds nice.
And I did research this fairly thoroughly because the tax map, law numbers have changed.
Okay.
The formers have changed. I chased the whole title down. A lot of busy work just to make sure that it's going to the right entity because it's a different entity than it did in 1990.
Bill, your.
Bill, your mic is off. Oh.
It all looks good.
There's definitely not one of those situations where.
No, it's a financial instrument.
There are no public rights involved.
All things are really financial instruments. I mean.
Just somebody didn't pay a bill and they paid it, and then we didn't release the lien.
Okay, we're sure that they paid the bill.
What's the question?
We're sure they paid the bill.
Yes.
Am I sure they paid the bill in 1990? No, I'm not, but there's no evidence that they didn't pay the bill and have been paying the bill for the last 31 years.
It was a tax.
Tax lien from 1990.
Yeah.
It wasn't because they didn't pay their sewer bill or something or?
No. Wasn't about the sewer bill. There's no sewer there.
Obstruction in the right-of-way fee that they, okay, I just.
To me, this is a very routine cleanup of a title issue. It's pretty old.
Sure. It's just a difficult, things get presented to us all the time where we give up rights and it's all very routine. And sometimes I voted yes, and then somebody later on has explained to me why I should have asked my question. So I'm trying to distinguish, so.
Okay, all those in favor? Four zero. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, everybody. To our discussion items, excuse me, swallowed wrong. Update on watershed restoration project, I believe this is, was back to the consultant discussion. Is that correct, Audra?
Well, that was, that was going to be the purpose of it, and then I had additional information. So basically, I came to you to explain to you why I don't have any sort of proposals for you to review or, you know, firms or individual consultants to choose from. I have reached out to a few entities. I'm not really comfortable saying exactly who because some of them have employment. They, they're very experienced in this area. They've, they have employment in other areas, so they would have to make the choice to sort of come back to consulting and take on this project as well as, you know, others and, or stay in their current employment. So I just, I don't want to, you know, give names or talk about that. Others would have to drop other projects that they're working on to do this, and they're very interested in doing so, but they still need to make some decisions. So, you know, I, I just am not at a place where I can tell you exactly who they are and, and what they might come to us with, but just wanted to assure you that I am working on that and, you know, sort of looking for qualified entities who would be a good fit for the project. And we do have some that are excellent and very interested in the project, and hopefully it all works out. And I can come back to you with some proposals to look over and choose from. So that's that update as to why I'm not ready with that. And the other part of it is Matt Bernier reached out to me, I think it was at the beginning of February, it was the 3rd of February, just to make me aware of the fact that NOAA and the Restoration Center, they're receiving significant funding through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And they're very interested in funding the McGunta Cook watershed restoration. And there's quite a few different, you know, funding streams and opportunities. But I think that, you know, significantly, you know, some of these programs, it's a zero-match proposition from the town, so it could be completely federally funded, particularly money's available for restoring Fish Passage by removing in-stream barriers and providing technical assistance. And another funding stream, it's grants and providing funding and technical assistance for purposes of restoring marine, estuary, coastal, or Great Lakes ecosystem habitat or constructing or protecting ecological features that protect coastal communities from flooding or coastal storms. So I won't get into the, it's like a staggering amount available. Basically, anything, they, they really want to include the whole restoration project. They're very well aware of, you know, the feasibility work that we've done and the cost estimates for that entire effort. And they were interested in putting that in, and it was kind of like, do you have anything else at all? Yeah, no, I mean, the, the culvert, the, on Daly Brook.
Yep.
And that, you know, Atlantic Avenue, they were interested in that, you know, all, like a lot of the.
That was what a big, a big part of it is looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, that there, there might be an opportunity to, they had seen the Rossinav Bridge on the DOT work plan and then the Main Street Bridge, and then we have the Mullino Bridge. We have a series of bridges with some pretty big price tags, but they're.
Cross the McGunta Cook that, you know, those crossings could be dealt with in a way that's more habitat-friendly, it's more, you know, flood-resilient and all of that they're interested in, in funding. So it's a, it's a huge opportunity for the town that really didn't exist when we started having these discussions four years ago, five years ago now.
Two questions. And is also Lincolnville?
Well, that's the thing. They, they like watershed-scale projects, so absolutely, we could pull in, you know, some of our conversations we had with the Lincolnville Select Board. So it's a, you know, it's more of a regional effort than just, you know, the, the watershed as it exists in the Town of Camden.
So what's the process?
So, you know, there's, it's really just grant preparation, working with NOAA to do that. Matt Bernier is very willing to provide us with a lot of assistance to do that. So I guess, you know, making you all aware of the opportunity, I thought was the first step. But also just finding out, you know, do you have any appetite as a group for kind of understanding why these funding opportunities exist or learning more about them? Because I'm sure Matt would be more than willing to come to a Select Board meeting and sort of explain it all to you.
I think it's a good idea for the public to have him come in and explain it.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I guess just before, you know, I, I sort of actively pursue anything, I'm absolutely going to come to the Select Board and get authorization to do so, but I, I didn't want to sort of hit you with it.
Yep.
In one night where you had to learn about the program, learn about the implications of it, learn about why it's a good opportunity and make the decision. I wanted to, you know, kind of step this out so that I could make you aware of it.
Makes sense.
Tell you there's an opportunity to have, you know, Matt educate yourselves and the public a little bit more before you make a decision.
Cool.
Yeah, he's great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I guess too, you know, another thing, this money also can go towards project management. So, you know, this consultant we're talking about hiring, yes.
Great, that's great. Sounds great. Update on MDOT sidewalks for mechanic and elm?
Happy, happy update. Oh, sorry. Tony probably.
Tony, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Tony, you have to get to a microphone or take it with you.
The, the only question I would have is timing. So, yeah, while these funds are available for studying and hiring advisors and so forth, realistically, by the time you're done with the grant application, when would the funding actually be available?
So we talked about that quite a bit, and, and it's, it funds everything from, you know, feasibility to construction. And that's one of the reasons why they liked, you know, our project so much is that, you know, there's a lot of feasibility work.
they're very experienced in this area, they've, they have employment in other areas, so they would have to make the choice to sort of come back to consulting and take on this project as well as, you know, others, and/or stay in their current employment, so I just, I don't want to, you know, give names or talk about that. Others would have to drop other projects that they're working on to do this, and they're very interested in doing so, but they still need to make some decisions. So, you know, I just am not at a place where I can tell you exactly who they are and what they might come to us with, but just wanted to assure you that I am working on that and, you know, sort of looking for qualified entities who would be a good fit for the project. And we do have some that are excellent and very interested in the project, and hopefully it all works out, and I can come back to you with some proposals to look over and choose from. So, that's that update, as to why I'm not ready with that. And the other part of it is Matt Bernier reached out to me, I think it was at the beginning of February, it was the 3rd of February, just to make me aware of the fact that NOAA and the Restoration Center, they're receiving significant funding through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and they're very interested in funding the McGunta Cook watershed restoration. And there's quite a few different, you know, funding streams and opportunities, but I think that, you know, significantly, you know, some of these programs, it's a zero-match proposition from the town, so it could be completely federally funded, particularly money's available for restoring fish passage by removing in-stream barriers and providing technical assistance, and another funding stream, it's grants and providing funding and technical assistance for purposes of restoring marine, estuary, coastal, or Great Lakes ecosystem habitat, or constructing or protecting ecological features that protect coastal communities from flooding or coastal storms. So, I won't get into the, it's like a staggering amount available, basically, anything, they really want to include the whole restoration project, they're very well aware of, you know, the feasibility work that we've done and the cost estimates for that entire effort, and they were interested in putting that in, and it was kind of like, do you have anything else at all?
Over.
Yeah, no, I mean, the culvert on Daly Brook and that, you know, Atlantic Avenue, they were interested in that, you know, all, like a lot of the...
Bridge stuff, that was what a big part of it is looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, that there, there might be an opportunity to, they had seen the Ross and Av Bridge on the DOT work plan, and then the Main Street Bridge, and then we have the Mullinow Bridge. We have a series of bridges with some pretty big price tags, but they're...
Cross the McGunta Cook, that, you know, those crossings could be dealt with in a way that's more habitat-friendly, it's more, you know, flood-resilient, and all of that, they're interested in funding. So, it's a, it's a huge opportunity for the town that really didn't exist when we started having these discussions four years ago, five years ago now.
Two questions. And is also Lincolnville?
Well, that's the thing, they, they like watershed-scale projects, so absolutely, we could pull in, you know, some of our conversations we had with the Lincolnville Select Board, so it's a, you know, it's more of a regional effort than just, you know, the watershed as it exists in the town of Camden.
So, what's the process?
So, you know, there's, it's really just grant preparation, working with NOAA to do that. Matt Bernier is very willing to provide us with a lot of assistance to do that, so I guess, you know, making you all aware of the opportunity, I thought, was the first step, but also just finding out, you know, do you have any appetite as a group for kind of understanding why these funding opportunities exist, or learning more about them, because I'm sure Matt would be more than willing to come to a Select Board meeting and sort of explain it all to you.
I think it's a good idea for the public to have him come in and explain it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I guess just before, you know, I sort of actively pursue anything, I'm absolutely gonna come to the Select Board and get authorization to do so, but I didn't want to sort of hit you with it...
Yep.
...in one night where you had to learn about the program, learn about the implications of it, learn about why it's a good opportunity, and make the decision. I wanted to, you know, kind of step this out so that I could make you aware of it...
Makes sense.
...tell you there's an opportunity to have, you know, Matt, educate yourselves and the public a little bit more before you make a decision.
Cool.
Yeah, he's great.
Thank you.
But I guess, too, you know, another thing, this money also can go towards project management, so, you know, this consultant we're talking about hiring, yes.
Great, that's great. Sounds great. Update on MDOT sidewalks for mechanic and...
Happy, happy update. Oh, sorry. Tony, probably...
Tony, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Tony, you have to get to a microphone, or take it with you.
The only question I would have is timing, so, yeah, while these funds are available for studying and hiring advisors and so forth, realistically, by the time you're done with the grant application, when would the funding actually be available?
So, we talked about that quite a bit, and it funds everything from, you know, feasibility to construction, and that's one of the reasons why they liked, you know, our project so much, is that, you know, there's a lot of feasibility work done, and then, you know, it's more of the sort of detailed engineering design, construction stage, and from the looks of it, you know, it'd kind of fall into the normal federal funding cycle, where we would try to have an application in and ready to go spring, summer, and then usually their funding becomes available in October.
October, yeah.
I see. Yeah, so, but, but you, the funds wouldn't be available, they might be available to reimburse you, I don't know, but they wouldn't be available to hire somebody next week.
Right, so...
So, don't mix those two issues.
Right, right.
Perhaps you could get reimbursed, but I don't know.
And I would, I would see like a really good opportunity for whoever is hired as a consultant to help us with the grant writing process.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered. Another good point, Tony, thank you.
No, Tony, thank you for mentioning that, because that's a really good point.
That's very important, yeah.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't treat this as...
No.
...taking our focus away completely from the other thing that you assigned me to.
Update on MDOT, I'm sorry, Allison.
Right, I mean, I think that's part of maybe what we would want to hear from a potential consultant, is sort of recommendations from them on how a process could unfold, and the same thing goes with any kind of committee, I think, that depending on the way the, you know, what kind of a grant application was put in, or who the consultant was, and who, you know, who they're working with, or who our project partners are, you know, say there's, maybe Lincolnville has a few culvert projects that they'd like to put in or something, or we want to try to put in something with a dam, it might be that, you know, Lincolnville residents, or, so, I mean, I think we, that Tony's right, we shouldn't, there may be a need to still have some outside expertise, I think there almost definitely is still a need to have some outside expertise before...
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't think we've said anything different.
No, no.
Just the funding part of it, just don't plan on the funding part, that's all.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's it.
But at the same time, we don't want to commit ourselves to some long, you know, process that doesn't, you know, completely ignores what the RFP ultimately says, so I don't, they haven't put out, I don't think, have they ever put out, like, a detailed request for proposals?
No, no, there's been normal, no formal request at this stage, it's really just saying, these are the programs we've created, this is the focus of these programs, and keep an eye out, because we'll, we'll be asking for competitive proposals pretty soon.
Sounds interesting. Update in...
And I mean, I can't, I really can't emphasize what a big deal it is for NOAA to approach us and say, your project fits into this perfectly, you know, we really want to include you.
We'll afford to get Matt here. Update in MDOT sidewalks.
Yep, so, like I said, happy update. There were two options that MDOT was weighing, so one was basically just making all of those asphalt ramps, you know, in front of French and Braun into concrete ramps, which still, you know, there were some grade challenges, and I thought, you know, that would, that was not necessarily a good solution for most people, because, you know, it was a real steep drop-off, even in the areas where people weren't, you know, stepping down onto a ramp to cross the street. So, you know, one of the other solutions we proposed was a wider bump out, wider radius bump out in that area, and when MDOT sort of looked at that option, they, you know, they felt that it could be achieved at, you know, close enough to the same cost that they weren't going to make us pay the difference, so that's the option they're going to go with.
So, we're gonna lose another parking spot?
It's, no, because...
They're already blocked there, so...
Well, you'd be surprised, the creative parking that's happening.
Yeah, that area is way too close to the crosswalk.
Yeah.
So, I think, yeah, we're not going to lose a parking space, but it might kind of shift things a little bit.
So, that'll be actually then kind of more similar to what the downtown master plan?
Yes, I think we even have an opportunity to fit in a tree well in a street tree there.
Like the bump out across the street.
Yep.
Oh, that would be nice.
Do you know, do you know when that'll happen?
So, they're, they're having Ranger, who did, you know, the work, just come back and do that project, so I think that they're hoping that they can start in spring and be done before Memorial Day?
Yeah, they should be able to, they should be able to.
Yeah, because Ranger wants to get in, fix that, and get out, and move on to the next job.
Good, good, thank you, Audra. Any reports, Mrs. Kaler?
I, I think that you're pretty up to speed with everything that I have. I'm gonna have a more thorough report for you at the next meeting with all the departments.
Oh, great. Select Board, Allison?
Yeah, I think, as a lot of people are aware, we lost sort of one of Camden's greatest, not sort of, but I would argue probably Camden's greatest contributor in terms of citizens, Barbara Dyer passed away recently, was writing really right up until the end. I went and visited her at the Sussman House, but I think that we really should, you know, as a town, as a Select Board, think about what we could do to help her, you know, her legacy live on. Barbara was so, so concerned with the sort of the losing of Camden history, so many things that just have never been, you know, had never been written down. She documented, you know, this is just one of her many books, but, you know, there's so much stuff, 20 years of writing a column for the Camden Herald, 10 or so books, and a lot of that stuff is kind of, you know, scattered around in places, and if you know to look for it, it's, it's there, but it would be, I think, really important to try to make that stuff more available to the, to the public, and sort of highlight that contribution. One thing that a lot of people don't know, one of the properties that we recently acted on as a Select Board, that Willow Street House, for instance, you know, people were arguing over whether it was, you know, historic or not, but that house was the house that Barbara's mother lived in when she was, she was, I forget, there's eight or 10 years old. She arrived from Syria, it was Syria then, Lebanon now, as an orphan, came on the Boston boat to Camden, not speaking a word of English, and basically had to figure out how to make it here. She got a job at the Brewster Shirt Factory as a 10-year-old, not speaking any English, found a place to, to live, and that was in, it was the Alexander family, the last name was Alexander, I forget, what's the first name? I forget his first name, but a well-known family in Camden took her in, and they had built, he built this, you know, little house on Willow Street. He, Barbara's mother, lived there for many years. She raised enough money to have her brother, Sammy, they called him, come over from Lebanon. She sent the money there, he came over, he started a little fruit store in Camden, and then together they raised enough money, and they were able to buy the Willow Street House and live together. Unfortunately, Sammy died of the flu, actually, when he was 22, the day he was supposed to ship out to, to join the war effort, but Barbara wrote a great little book called Streets Are Paved With Gold, and it was all about, you know, coming to Camden and just what an incredible opportunity it provided, and so I love that, you know, Barbara was happy that the Willow Street House was going to be saved, and to see it like continue to be affordable housing is, you know, just sort of one of the, like, many stories that I think, you know, people, people say, oh, what, you know, why does history matter? And, you know, a lot of the time, it's a subjective thing, but when we have these places in our community that have been so important to people, that have been so important, it's like, I do think it's, it matters that we remember, okay, well, there's this little house that played such a big role in a really important person in our town's life, and you know, making sure that we continue to be stewards of that, and there are so many stories like that.
Oh, yeah.
And there are so many things that by reading Barbara's books or her articles, I've been able to understand other people's perspectives in town in a way that I never, even growing up here, you know, I never would have had that full perspective on so many issues if not for the ability to go back and read about these, you know, these different people, and so I hope that we kind of take on the challenge as a town of trying to continue to profile people and write about their stories, and encourage people to write things down, you know, in a similar way that Barbara did. The Camden Public Library now has 100 years or more of the Camden Herald digitized, that which is like a huge accomplishment, and you can go to their website now and, and read lots of, you know, lots of things, many of Barbara's articles, different things like that, so I just encourage everybody to try to sometimes do a little bit of research into the contributions that have come before us.
Thanks.
And thank you to Barbara.
Absolutely. What a historian, what a person.
Well, I have to hand it to the Parks and Recreation people. In the most trying circumstances weather-wise, they did a terrific job of holding the toboggan races this past weekend, you know, freezing on Sunday, you know, slushy on Saturday, and they pulled it off. It was, there were more people out there, because it was such a comfortable day, it was, it was packed, great costumes, great races, great everything. Because of the water conditions, I think there, some people were surprised, some people had fast speeds, some people had slow speeds, it changed things up, and we, of course, had our annual race with the Rockport Select Board, and I'd like to say that we were, after winning three years in a row, the last three races, that we were very gracious, and we thought, they've had a tough year, let's let them win, but when it comes right down to it, they whupped us, and they deserved the win, they came prepared, they had T-shirts, they made sure they had a sled, they did a great job, and I'd like to commend them for it, and let them know that we will be back next year.
Yep.
And so, thanks to Parks and Recreation, Beth and Holly, and all the people out there for working in very trying circumstances and pulling it off.
Thank you, Mark, very well put. Sophie?
No.
Just a brief heads up, I mean, we already know MIDC, McCoys Internet Corporation, the broadband initiative, they had a board meeting and realized that their first initiative, they want to approach the three towns of Rockland, Rockport, and Camden for municipal build-out of the infrastructure for broadband. Rockport already has the build-out, they would be in a position to, if amenable, to sign the assets of that installation to the MIDC. Camden would have to fund its portion, and then similarly, the assets would go into the corporation, and Rockland, the same thing. Rockland has funds, I believe, already had been approved some years ago when Audra was there, I think. Camden's chunk of change has not, and that's, as I understand it, it's in the order of $600,000.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's forthcoming...
That's what's being asked?
Sorry?
Will be asked of, that is what is going to be asked of us.
Well, to do the, to do the build-out, in the order of $600, $650,000, so if Camden's going to build that out, we'll have to figure out a way to fund it and assign the assets. Again, we're not making a decision, discussion yet, this is forthcoming, to think about, that's all.
Uh, sorry, could we, are we gonna have that presentation at some point?
Yes, absolutely, and, and the Chair of MIDC will be discussing this with us at a future meeting.
Like, the presentation on the study? Because...
Yes, that's, when it, when it's ready to, yes, it's not...
I thought it had been finalized.
No.
That's what Deb said.
No, we discussed it yesterday, and there was still, there's still some holes there. Again, it's a study, but, no, it's not done. It's, well, first of all, it's, it's a feasibility study, it's never, ever going to really be done until it's turned into a business plan.
Okay, I'm just, my level of knowledge of this is becoming, there's a gap, you know, a pretty big gap in between where we would get to $600,000 of, I thought this wasn't supposed to be...
The feasibility study didn't talk about the town, it's called T-Bone Build-Out at all. That was a separate study done by Axiom, you haven't even seen it yet, so...
More to the, yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, that'll, the Axiom study on the build-out will be discussed, yes. Oh, that's a separate piece.
I'd like to get into having a few more presentations at Select Board meetings sometimes, just to try to keep our knowledge base up.
I agree, I agree. Just, that was more of a heads-up, that's all. With that, I would ask for an adjournment to the meeting. Mark?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we want to leave Select Board and go into executive session under, if you need the buzzwords, I can give them to you, but, they're right here, Mark.
He's gonna make me read them.
Oh, man.
I make a motion that we leave the Select Board and move into executive session pursuant to MRSA 405.6(c) disposition of publicly-held property and illegal rights and duties.
All those in favor?
Can we, discussion?
Discussion about, what, a motion?
I, I guess I feel compelled to, somebody has written, and apparently we didn't see a hand raised. I just feel like it should be at least read, Jean Brewer...
Read it, read it, but we're not gonna answer it.
Right.
Go ahead, please, please.
So, Jean Brewer resident said, I tried raising my hand after the river discussion, but I guess nobody noticed. River update questions, do you have a prioritized list of work that will be done yet? Have you looked into dam rehabilitation funding and funding for dam reservation? I think maybe that means preservation.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
And, yeah, part of a larger discussion I...
Thank you, no, you should read it to record.
Very much want to answer that, but...
No, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move on.
Okay.
We missed it, and there's be a lot more discussion about...
I think that's part of the process of what the consultant would do.
Exactly, exactly.
That's, that's the goal, is to...
Exactly, this, this not the point of the discussion was, this, this agenda item was not encompassing those elements, but thanks for the question. All those in favor of 4-0? Okay, thanks, Bruce, thank you. Ken, take care.